Good morning. Today's Thursday, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. We are here for a work session. As always, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ken, can you please take the lead?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to a republic which will stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. Today, we just have one announcement. As you likely do know by now, distribution of the COVID- nineteen vaccine has begun across the United States. Residents may call eight three three six nine seven four eight two nine or visit www.covid-nineteen-vaccine.health.ny.gov. If you visit the website, you just follow the prompts and you will reach a page and it will identify the locations and availability information. We are hopeful that in the very near future, hopefully within a couple of weeks, that we will have a vaccination center here in Riverhead. The logistics are premature. They're being worked out, but we're told that they're trying to identify a location and we will be continuing to work on that end. We urge all our residents to remain vigilant and follow CDC and Department of Health guidelines. Please continue to follow social distancing protocols. Get tested at one of our COVID- nineteen locations. They may be found on our town's website. And remember the three Ws: wear your mask, watch your distance, and wash your hands. Okay, moving forward, our first item for discussion today is Chief Hager Miller, who is here to discuss last month's statistics. Chief, can you please come forward?
Good morning.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning.
I was just here.
Yes, and you're gonna be here all the way until tonight, right?
All the way to tonight. We have our list.
Yes, Chief, I wanted to make that a point and I'm glad we're on the same page on that. Can you please discuss the listening toys on the police reform?
So we scheduled two listening tours for the town of Riverhead. First home was Tuesday at eleven AM. Not too many comments. I figure it went well. Would like to see more participation, but that didn't happen. Hopefully tonight at a different time, which is at five PM tonight, we'll see who signs on.
Did you get anybody that pre-registered?
We do. So on Tuesday, we have...
You want him to raise his voice, correct?
Right.
I figured that's why you're here.
On Tuesday, we had twenty-nine people register to listen and we had five people who registered to comment. However, the people that wanted to comment weren't online that day. So we had only about one person that registered to comment sign on, but then we opened up to the other twenty-nine people and people did make some comments.
Well, I think it's better that you're having it at five, even though six would be good too because of people that work. It's just hard for them. Why did you guys decide to not have a give and take?
That's how the county ran there, so we were kind of following the soup with that. We didn't want to get into that back and forth, almost like the open comment at the end of the town board meeting. People allowed to give their input and basically it's not a give and take situation.
Okay. I just, I mean, I'm glad that it's at five and not in the middle of the day. I think a little later would be better for working people if we have another one.
I think people probably still sign on at five thirty. It will probably still be on, so I don't think that's too much.
And you guys put the word out everywhere just because you're saying the first time wasn't as many as you were hoping for.
Right. We did have media release last week on it, so no way out to move.
And I know it was on the website, correct?
Right, website also.
All right, so maybe we can even email it to some organizations.
We can try. I can see what Tammy has as far as email list for that.
That would be great. Thank you.
Catherine, you might want to also know that we have the committee and we have the advisory panel and they represent the entire community and they're also responsible for sending that out. And we have in our meetings with the committees, we have stressed that to them and that's part of their responsibility is to make sure that the work gets out.
I'm not questioning the group. I'm just asking on my own accord.
I think it was, I mean, as far as number of people that were on on Tuesday, I think it was, I think it would have been helpful if more people were on to comment.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward.
December monthly report from the police department. So I think it's the same as it's been for the last few months. Everything is basically down, quieter, except for the criminal incidents and the revenue are both up again this month. Revenue is a good thing to be up. Criminal incident's not such a good thing, but I really don't think it's that bad. We finished the year just a little over what last year's numbers were. Actually, it represents a three percent increase. And basically, when I broke that down and I looked at it, it wasn't really crimes that involved people. It was more of your larceny crimes that caused the increase. Well, with the economy and people out of work and such, that's somewhat understandable.
Whenever you have, the economy is affected, you have a property crime increase. So yeah, I agree. They go hand in hand, unfortunately.
So if I look at, if I look at, and supervisor looked at, with me, on the Part One crimes, which is how we report through the uniform crime report, which is the fact. Basically, the crimes that involve a person or is an act on a person were forty-one in two thousand and nineteen and in two thousand and twenty, it was only thirty-nine. So there was a small decrease there. And as I said, the larceny ones are what brought the numbers down. And larceny meaning stealing or property or something like that.
So we're actually looking at an increase in property slightly and a decrease in personal.
Correct.
Okay. And the personal crimes are the ones that really upset the community, you know? There's a lot more emotion involved as opposed to the property. No crime should be acceptable regardless, but that's the one that has the most effect on the community for other personal crimes. And it's good to see that they went down. Any want to have any comments to make on it? Thank you for sharing this with us.
Excellent job, Chief. Thank you.
I'll see you next week.
No, five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, yes, five o'clock.
Thanks, Chief.
We'll be back right here.
Thank you, Chief, again. Moving on to our last open session item, we have Barry Long from the Urban Design Associates to present our much anticipated pattern book. Barry is joining us via Zoom. We met, I met with Barry over a year ago and we discussed the direction of the newly established resolution to create a pattern book. I am happy to hear that the recommendations, all ten recommendations that I provided to Mr. Long have been incorporated. This will provide a much needed roadmap to developing Main Street. This effort coupled with the development of a town square are strong indicators. Our Main Street is well on its way to being gentrified. Good morning, Larry. Barry, excuse me, Barry. I just changed your name.
Thank you. I have a short presentation today and I had emailed that to the town or I can show it off of my screen. What would your preference be?
This is online, correct?
It's online, yes.
It's online. Perfect.
I think if you, you mean if you show it on the screen, we can kind of follow along?
I think so. Let me try that.
That's what I was gonna say.
Okay, hang on just a minute. I'll pull it up. I was expecting, last time you guys ran it, so I'll need to run it.
Yeah, just let's see.
Just gotta give me one second here to get it queued. All right. Thank you for your patience. I'm with you. So this is being recorded and this presentation will be part of the recording. Okay, can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Well, again, good morning Supervisor Aguirre. And yes, it has been over a year since you and I first met. And welcome to your first year in office, year plus. And also, good morning to the other council members. And Councilman Rothwell, welcome. I see that you're sitting in a cody seat there in the front row, so welcome to the pattern book process.
Thank you.
So it's been a long haul, but it's also been a good process. And we want to thank the town board and town staff and stakeholders and residents for both their participation and leadership in the pattern book. For us at UDA, it's been a real privilege to work in support of the town and that has been our role to work in support of the town on the pattern book. And this process was born of a concern, a concern about creating, I think, a canyon effect along the Main Street. But interestingly enough, in talking to residents, the outcome has been much more, well, the discussion has been much broader. And all of those things were codified in the pattern book. So it started talking about the development potential, but as you'll see, the final pattern book is much broader than that. And we think it's better for it. So this is the cover to the downtown Riverhead pattern book. What you have in your hands is the final version. And what you're going to be asked to act on today in the resolution is the adoption of the guidelines. This is, however, only part of the process. It also needs to be legally codified in an amendment to the town code or an overlay to the town code. And that process is going to follow this and there'll be a public hearing on that where the public will have an opportunity to comment and input. So the pattern book is one piece of the puzzle, but it's not the entire puzzle. One thing I want to always highlight is the community engagement. And we had a tremendous amount of community engagement with both stakeholders and residents, both in person and online. And it's all documented in the back of the pattern book in the appendices. And this was both in interactive work sessions, as we said, and through surveys. And the survey results, we did multiple surveys, both in person and online, and all the survey results are documented too. So we don't come before you today with our recommendations based on our opinion. We're here before you with our professional recommendations based on input from your community and studying your Main Street. So the pattern book, which was originally conceived, I think, really just about design guidelines for buildings, has been expanded. But our contract wasn't expanded and I want to be clear about that. We didn't ask you to expand our contract. We did this because we felt that it was appropriate and important. It covers policy recommendations because we understand that things like flooding or so, and the future of sea level rise are so important to the town. And the town during this process has taken up that charge with the Army Corps of Engineers parking and other things just related to policy recommendations. They're in the first section. So these are things which we felt needed to be documented and which were talked about extensively in the pattern book process. We also have guidelines for public areas. Activation of the Main Street is really important. And the truth is that you, the town, own much of the public realm, like the sidewalk areas and the riverfront park and open spaces. So there are guidelines for public areas and the public wanted to talk about that too. And then the third thing are objective design standards for private development. These are the building design guidelines. So I guess I should just say, because I'm sure you're wondering, what's changed since the last time we were in a council work session? And the basic substance of the pattern book is as presented before, so I'm not going to go back through all three of these sections in detail. However, we did receive good input from both the board and from some of the key stakeholder groups. There was a public review draft out and we did receive comments on that. And what we've gone and done is we've made some refinement, some of its clarifications and tweaks to the pattern book. But really, the substance of the pattern book is the same. So one thing you'll see that's been added in the front of the pattern book in the first section is about what makes a vibrant downtown. And really, this follows smart growth principles, which are widely accepted. But a few things that I would highlight for you are the mixing of land uses, which are critical. And we have recommended in detail that you continue to strive to have a broad mix of uses in downtown Riverhead. Another one is a range of housing opportunities and choices. The public is not excited about a lot of additional, a lot of folks, I'll say, are not excited about a lot of additional housing downtown. However, having a broad range of housing opportunities and choices is important and it's an important part of a healthy Main Street. What the input that we received is, is that there's too much housing of one tenure right now and that it needs to be more broad. It needs to be not only rental, but also for sale and at a variety of income levels so that it serves a wider swath of your community. So that's included. One of the critical ones is walkability. And your downtown has a lot of the physical infrastructure for walkability, but it doesn't have great connections between Main Street and the river, which is a weakness. And also, some places where you walk are not as inviting and neighborly as they should be. So that's something we've worked on in the pattern book. And then another one I would highlight is the preservation and creation of open space. Probably your greatest asset downtown is actually the Peconic River, back door to downtown, but hopefully, front door in the future. And what you're also addressing today or have been discussing, the town square. This new amenity, which the board has been very proactive and envisioning and creating the opportunity for, is important. Open space is an important part of creating a vibrant downtown and we applaud what you're doing to that end. So that's been added. We also, I would say amplified a little bit, although didn't change our recommendations related to pedestrian-friendly streets and passages. We just amplified the importance of this, but you won't see substantive changes really in the first or second section of the pattern book. Where we did do a little bit more work since the last time we spoke with you is on the objective design standards and these relate to the buildings, the physical buildings. And as we've said before, your current town code, really, this is what you give developers, which is a box to build within without a lot of direction. And fortunately, over the last year, we've had a lot of time to work on guidelines to help articulate the box so that it fits in. So it's not just a brown box. It becomes a beautiful building that fits into the context of downtown Riverhead. However, at every point, we've tried to create a balance between aesthetics and developers and what they would like to do. So we've tried to give them parameters in guidance, but without tamping down economic development, there's a balance. And we are always trying to strike the balance. We like to say the pendulum for places like downtown needs to reside in the middle. It can't swing to one side or the other. So we did add, and I think this is helpful, an overview right up in the front about what makes a good Main Street building. Folks said it would be great if you would take everything that you've discussed in this section and just please do a little executive summary that talks about what makes a good Main Street building and what are you really codifying here? So we've added this page and I'm just going to read you the eight things which we've included because this is the substance of this section. So it says that there are certain essential characteristics present in all good Main Street buildings. And these characteristics are universal and transcend architectural style. And in the context of downtown Riverhead, these are as follows. In other words, we've modified or tweaked them to be appropriate for downtown Riverhead based on the input we received. The first thing, critical sidewalk activation. Buildings have a responsibility to activate the sidewalk. What does this mean? This means like things like awning, signage, lighting, and how you amenitize the outside of the storefront, whether it's planting boxes or seeding or displays, and also having activated uses right inside the storefront. They don't have to be the entire ground floor, but right inside the storefront. That's critical. Buildings have a role in sidewalk activation and we've called that out. That's part of being good Main Street building versus a building somewhere else, say in a strip mall. Contextual scale. So here, what we're talking about is fitting into the scale of Main Street. Main Street historically has been predominantly one to three-story buildings, predominantly one and two. The current gray or brown box gets you up to five, but we've spent probably the most time in talking about how to address scale. Full wrap architecture. You can think about this like wrapping a package, say a gift, say a birthday gift. And what we're saying is if you can see the wrapping paper on the outside of a building, it needs to be articulated, addressed or dressed up. There's no backs in downtown. So we can't wrap, say, three sides of a package and leave one side unwrapped. We wouldn't do that with a gift. And we shouldn't do that with downtown buildings in there that they are held to a higher standard. They're a gift to your community and they need to be wrapped on all visible sides. And then just finishing up, simple massing. Three-part vertical composition buildings should have a base, a middle, and a top. Transparent storefronts. We don't want blank storefronts. Punched window openings and doors facing the primary street. This is what makes a good Main Street building. It's not rocket science and I wish we didn't have to call these things out, but sometimes we forget. And these are the fundamental principles, so we've quantified that. So things like contextual scale and four-up architecture are dealt with in lot development standards at the lotting level. This is in your pattern book you just received, was in the draft that was issued. What we have done, though, at the request of folks who got back to us on the review draft, is we've gone back and illustrated all the other things to make it more illustrative and less text. We thought that this was good and they said, could you please provide some examples of what's a good standard and what to avoid? So we've done that. There's multiple pages in the back that go through those things that I just went through. What makes a good Main Street building in the context of downtown Riverhead? We have not gone in and been tremendously prescriptive about architectural style because the broad sentiment is that we shouldn't be. We've given guidance, but these other things transcend style and they have been codified. So just in finishing, I talked a little bit about the town square. This is addressed in the second section. We are, we think that this is a critical initiative for a couple of reasons. And I'll just leave you with this. One is it addresses a main weakness in downtown, which is connecting Main Street to the Peconic River. You don't, the Peconic River is incredibly invisible from Main Street for a town with such a tremendous asset. And through the town's vision, you have an opportunity to fix that. Another thing which it does is it creates a beating heart in that it's a civic space in the center of downtown. And open space is part of making a vibrant, vital downtown and lifting your downtown up even further. You have a great downtown, but we can always improve things. But it also creates a place for public events. And that's really the life of downtown. It's not the buildings, it's the people and creating places for people to have events and activity and create vitality on the street. That's what life's all about. The rest is just a stage set. So that's really important. You're also addressing probably the main weakness in downtown in eliminating a number of vacant storefronts and replacing them with an activated use. And there's a lot of development proposed around this area, so we think it's a win-win for everybody. And I'll just conclude by saying again, we appreciate so much the privilege of being invited to work in support of the town. It's been a wonderful experience. The pattern book does strike a balance and we've tried to strike a balance. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anybody want to make a comment? Tim?
No.
No. Ken?
That's a very impressive report. It's like been reviewing it and still like to do more, but I thank you for all the work you put into it.
Mike?
A lot of good recommendations as well.
Catherine?
I just want to say that this product that we're getting and this whole process, on so many levels, I couldn't be more proud of it. First of all, I am very proud that we as a town made an investment of this sort in our downtown. We were showing everybody, we are also willing to make an investment in our downtown. I'm very, I couldn't be more pleased with the participation that we had and I'm proud of that on two different levels. You and Jeff and I worked really hard to set up all of the forums and the surveys. And I feel as though we were able to include everybody in this process, which really is important. And I'm sitting here just before trying to think if there was anyone that we left out. I can't think of anybody that was left out. Every stakeholder, every person was included and thank God we were able to get the public forums in before COVID hit because I know those are challenges with the master plan update. So, and also I thank our community for turning out and weighing in, you know, the community. It's one thing for people to talk about in their comments or to write negative things at times about downtown on comments, but it's another thing to turn out and be proactive and be part of the, you know, and let your voice be heard. So Riverhead really did turn out and I'm very proud of our community for that. I like the final product. I really, I think it's very important that it's a balanced approach because as we all know, it was, there were hot topics and there were different opinions. So the final product is a very balanced approach, especially, you know, with the height issue. We, you managed to keep the same density and yet offset things for the look and so that things fit together better. So everybody's concerns and needs have been addressed. And I'm really excited that we're tying this all in. We've got the town square happening, which is fantastic and a pivotal point. The pattern book will give more guidance to developers so that people, I think it will speed up the process, actually, because people will know straight up from the beginning, you know, things that we're looking for, just in every way. There's so many different facets of the pattern book. I really hope people take time to look at it. It talks about lighting and alleyways and signage and so many different topics. I think it will be a guideline that will move things along. And also, we'll be tying in the railroad station area. So we're at a really good point in our town and I'm appreciative for the work that everybody did and appreciative with my councilmates for working on this as well. And that's all.
Barry, are you still with us?
Yep.
I have one question. The town square, when did, was that an initial effort that you had? Or this commenced after you started the pattern book review, correct?
Well, if I understood your question, it was a little, I'm sorry, the audio was a little broken up there. But the town square, actually, I think even Supervisor Aguirre, when we met, I think even a year ago, November, it was something that you had brought up and I think that it's just evolved at the initiative of the town. This wasn't really an initiative that we pushed, but I'm hearing what residents said about the connection to the river and your discussions within the town at the board level and with staff. It's just evolved so wonderfully over the last year. It's just, it's the, it's, I mean, it's a once in a hundred year opportunity to really have a transformative... I mean, it's a once-in-a-hundred-year opportunity to really have a transformative initiative downtown. And it's remarkable.
Yeah, and that's what I was questioning because I... And thank you. Thank you very much for, you know, taking that recommendation and it moved forward. And, you know, we are in the process of purchasing two buildings and moving forward. And this is a great effort. I know that you changed directions a couple of times at our recommendations. And I commend you for being so open and flexible. Thank you, Barry. We have some work to complete on our end. We will set a public hearing for the entire community to provide their input. Thank you.
Perfect.
I also think, Barry, that your firm, I don't know, I think everyone agreed, the way you... Your demeanor and the way you dealt with everyone really made everyone feel as though their voice mattered. And clearly, the final product shows that every voice mattered. So that's... I'm appreciative.
Oh, thank you.
And I agree with you. Very well completed. And again, you'll be hearing from us. And hopefully, you'll be with us when we have the public hearings. We'll notify you.
Terrific.
Okay, anyone else?
Thank you, have a good day.
Take care, be safe.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you. You be safe too. You're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. You... Take care.
Okay. Devin? This concludes our discussion items. And Devin, can you please read the resolutions for today?
Okay, sure. So, an updated agenda packet was circulated because there was a little glitch. We had a couple of numbers that were repeated, which grabbed resos that were not supposed to be in the packet. So, if everyone's looking at the correct packet, there should be thirty-five in your copy.
You're talking?
Thirty-five or thirty-seven there, Tim?
What's happened?
How many do you have? Thirty-five or thirty-seven on that list?
Thirty-seven.
Okay, so...
Oh, there's thirty-five on the online site.
Yeah, so you want to go off the list that has thirty-five? Because there's a couple duplicates.
I have it online here.
Okay. All right, so number one, extends days of operation for Riverhead Raceway under Chapter 259 of the Riverhead Town Code due to COVID-19. Number two, awards rebid for food and meat products. Number three, authorizes the release of foundation security for Rajish Madam Peconic Management Group, LLP. Number four, 2020 EWR Project Number 81903 closure. Number five, authorizes the filing of an application for New York State assistance from the Household Hazardous Waste HHW State Assistance Program and signing of the associated state contract under the appropriate laws of New York State. Number six, resolution to extend Nunk Pro Tunk Authorization of the Building and Planning Administrator to approve temporary suspension of enforcement of outdoor dining permit fee requirements and zoning district limitations set forth in Chapter 253 of Town Code of the Town of Riverhead, subject to specified conditions. Number seven, accepts the retirement of a police officer. Number eight, resolution to authorize financial administrator to finalize bond requirements for Town Square project. Number nine, authorizes preparation of map and plan pursuant to Town Law for extension of the Riverhead Water District to serve town residents and businesses east of the former Grumman War Production Site. Number ten, authorizes town clerk to publish in post public notice to consider a local law to amend Chapter 301 entitled "Zoning and Land Development" of the Riverhead Town Code, Outdoor Car Storage.
So, I just want to bring up a few points here. I have made them before. I am not happy with this. I feel like having a whole bunch of cars stored out in the middle of some beautiful farm fields is not a nice entrance for the west side of our town. I think that, you know, moving forward with this would be something for special interest groups as opposed to what is best for Riverhead.
Well, it beats having a cement foundation or a concrete demolishing company, which could be there by the zoning. So, I think this is a much more benign process. And the way it's going to be done and shielded, you're not going to see it anyway. So I think it's perfect for the location.
And what is the acre... Yeah, but this is a lot of acreage. This is a large area. And we actually... This doesn't limit... This does not limit how many acres of cars can be stored there.
No, but it doesn't limit the number of acreage of the cement plants that you could have there too. Crushing concrete all during the day and disturbance enablement. This is an extremely benign use for that property.
Well, it also doesn't bring jobs. And I... What I'm concerned about, and I think other people would be concerned about this as well, is that you may have, you know, car dealerships from up west that are storing their cars here.
No, it's limited, right and wording. It's limited to the... The only dealerships in the town.
All right, well, I didn't see that. I'm glad to know that. But I just don't... I just don't think it's something that would be nice in Calberton at that area. So that's all.
Okay. Number eleven, ratifies the authorization for supervisor to execute an agreement for disciplinary charges. Number twelve, approves special event, Chapter 255, application for Chicken Kids. Number thirteen, approves special event, Chapter 255, application for Riverhead Rotary Garden Festival. Number fourteen, authorize the supervisor to sign an agreement with Suffolk County for the implementation of the school bus stop arm camera program. Number fifteen, hazard mitigation adoption for brick funding. Number sixteen, appoints a public safety dispatcher one. Number seventeen, authorizes sewer district employees to attend seminar. Number eighteen, ratifies authorization for the town clerk to publish in post a help-wanted advertisement for automotive equipment operators. Number nineteen, appoints a water treatment plant operator trainee. Number twenty, appoints a justice court clerk. Number twenty-one, accepts highway superintendent's personnel report and request for town board resolution to effectuate personnel request. Number twenty-two...
If I... I just want to make a note, again, I think I... I just want to confirm with the liaison to highway. This brings up the employees up to date, correct?
Thirty-six.
Okay.
Number twenty-two, ratifies the authorization of payment of the Association of Towns' annual membership dues for 2021. Number twenty-three, appoints a provisional wastewater treatment plant operator 3A. Number twenty-four, appoints a wastewater treatment plant operator 2A. Number twenty-five, authorizes the supervisor to sign Second Amendment of Memorandum of Understanding with Suffolk County for food delivery assistance. Number twenty-six...
I just want to make a note on number twenty-five. This is an emergency delivery. We have signed on with the county with an MOU. They will supply food packages for us. And anyone, regardless of age, can request them. Just call 311. You register and the senior center, all the police department, within 24 hours will deliver a box to your home to feed four people, three meals a day for three days. And that is available for anyone. Yes, Devin, thank you.
Number twenty-six, amends resolution 3194-2020, authorizes the supervisor to execute amended PSA with H2M for hazardous materials. Number twenty-seven, approves budget transfer for purchase of additional 2020 or newer frightliner dump truck. Number twenty-eight, appointment and approval of the fee schedule for the Rayner Group PE and LS LLC as consulting engineers and land surveyors. Number twenty-nine, extends bid for electric motor repair replacement, including emergency repair for the Riverhead Water District. Number thirty, appoints an assessment clerk. Number thirty-one, authorization for the supervisor to execute an amended agreement with National Fire and Safety Solutions, Inc., Nunk Pro Tunk. Number thirty-two, reappointment of member to the Riverhead Open Space Park Preserve Committee. Number thirty-three, authorizes renewal of musical works license agreement with the American Society of Composers, Authors, and Publishers, ASCAP, Nunk Pro Tunk. Number thirty-four, authorizes contract with Lexipol LLC for the Riverhead Police Department. And number thirty-five, authorizes the supervisor to execute an agreement with Urban Design Associates, LTD, for the design of a town square.
Did I miss something? I didn't see the... We had the resolution in to accept the pattern book, did I? Was I not...
We have to have a public hearing first? Before we... It goes through a resolution?
I mean, that's not what I was told. Emery, can you come and talk about that? Because my understanding that the public hearing is for the zoning, but not the actual adoption of the document.
Similar to when the town board adopted the final parking study. No public hearing was held. The public hearing is when we actually implement those provisions of the parking study and incorporate it into our zoning. As Barry Long stated, the pattern book is your guideline and blueprint to assist in the drafting. And the drafting and adoption of zoning, as he stated, is a necessary element. That element will be, without a doubt, a public hearing process. Because you're amending the town code.
So, it actually... It is important to adopt the document and then move forward to adopt zoning.
Yes, that's exactly what you did with the parking study. That's exactly the procedure you followed when you did the parking study. And the TOD. Yes.
Okay.
So can we... So I'm asking if we can put that resolution back in? Because that was in... That was in the packet.
Was the resolution submitted?
Yeah. The resolution was submitted and it was in.
Wait, what happened?
I think we wanted to make certain... I want, you know... I prepared it in anticipation of the presentation today and wanted to make sure, you know, it was good to put in the packet.
So can I get a vote from the board to have it... Vote to the table?
Oh, you can't put your stuff on that mic.
Emery, can I put it up?
Yeah, I mean, the town board had notification of it.
Right. Okay.
Correct, Dawn?
Yeah.
So we can add it to the agenda?
It's simply to adopt.
Correct.
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the zoning is... Dawn, can you address it as well?
Yeah, sure.
It's simply to adopt... Can you just reiterate that this is how we did it with the parking study and such?
Yeah, so the parking...
Did you want to go to the mic?
The parking plan and the TOD. So we adopted the planning document first. And that's the underpinning of the law, that you will adopt the zoning law. So first, we would adopt the plan. Then we would draw up draft zoning to implement the recommendations of the plan. And then you would have a public hearing on that. And then, you know, if you could take that comment and modify the plan somewhat, I mean, modify the zoning, you know, to accommodate the comments and then adopt it. So it's a... Another two-step process. And there'll be public input in that piece.
And that's the most critical component, is to have the public input. Whether you have a public hearing today or next week. Or to change the code, we need the public input. Because that's going to affect the pattern book.
Yes, and better...
Because the pattern book may have to be adjusted based on whatever code it, you know...
And that can be done... So, all right, thank you, Dawn. I just wanted to reiterate that with the others, it was a two-step process. So thank you. That's all I would say.
Yes, it is.
The planning document is the support for the zoning, and that's how it works.
Okay, thank you.
Great, so Diane will set up a... Once we adopt it, we'll set up the... Well, we have to go through code revision.
It's got to be codified, yeah.
Yeah, got to be codified, yeah.
If you implement and change your zoning, it's got to be codified.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, no, this is just to accept the document.
Right.
Which, that's what I'm asking for now. Because it was in the packet.
Correct.
I'm asking that we accept this document and then we move from there.
Sure.
And it's not code revision. It's a public hearing and, um...
But it would have to be codified to implement the zoning change.
You have to change code.
Or you look like you're trying to tell us something.
No, I'm sorry. I'm just comparing what Catherine Hubbard was trying to say.
We have to codify. We actually have to change code.
When you change code and zoning, you have to codify it. That's all I'm saying. And what Catherine's saying is correct. But this is a step further down the line when we go to implement something.
Perfect, agree.
I am in favor of adopting the... Yeah, I am too. That's fine.
No town code changes based on the adoption of it.
No.
It's working way in the...
What I originally thought yesterday.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Down the line, we will codify it, yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Can I make one more comment? I just want to be clear. So supervisor, when you stated earlier we were buying two buildings, we're buying three buildings, not two. And two of them...
What was with the option to purchase? And I understand that you're in the works. And we spoke about this two days ago. You're in the works of creating a possible third contract to incorporate that.
No, no. We... The resolutions that were presented to the town board and the town board signed on to allowed for either the option or purchase.
Correct. Good.
Throughout the process, and again, I'll have Dawn, you know, come up after me. Throughout the process, from the very beginning, the town board expressed its desire to move forward with all three. As a result of that, and I have the emails back and forth, when we talked about the bonding and the 5.5 million, that was, and the reason why we talked about it and the amount of money, because that was for the cost of purchase of all three, plus a layer of monies for demolition costs. So, it's... We've negotiated these contracts for months. I am very pleased at the results. I will share with the town board. From the beginning, Dawn and I had expressed and worked with the town board on the concern regarding remediation of any hazardous materials. The way we finally, Dawn and I, and I appreciate all the effort you put in with me, they are going to remediate prior to closing.
That's unusual.
It is.
Very unusual.
But it was key and necessary and essential for us because it's their contractor, their cost. We're only responsible, as you will recall, and it was fully set forth in those resolutions, for $50,000. So whatever those costs are that they incur with their contractor, the town board is well aware, we're a government entity. If we undertook it post... If remediation was undertaken post-closing, that would require bid, prevailing wage rates. And it would have really escalated it, you know, through the roof. But...
That's a tremendous provision, really.
No, we were so pleased with that.
That, and it also needs to be said, ladies, that what the purchase price was, was lower than the appraisal price. So we really appreciate your bargaining with this entire contract. Great job. Thank you.
So, you know, we're looking... The resolution that Dawn and I prepared was, let me say this. You have authorized the purchase of all three by resolution. And we did it pursuant to permissive referendum. We met the permissive referendum deadlines. No petitions were filed. In addition, the town board authorized the bonding of the 5.5. Do you need an additional resolution? No. But I did it. And Dawn and I felt because we're going to move on to the next step, it was important simply to reiterate it again and bring in our newest board member into the fold of the project. And that, it was a way to do it. But...
And I want to say that you and Dawn make a great team.
I was very impressed.
We've always worked well together. We continue to work well together. I... I can't... Emery's negotiating skills far surpass mine in every way. But she was, you know, able to really kind of nail down those important things for you. And I think I want to also just reiterate the full participation and support of this board is so critical to this project. I've said it from the beginning. I compliment you all again for, you know, taking the lead on it. And also, you know, I think the public senses that unity and purpose in moving forward with something that's good for the town. And that's what's really driving that good public sentiment also. And, you know, I think this board's moved this ball down the field further than I could have possibly hoped for in the last year, really. We... People are blown away when they're hearing where we're at with it. So... So you also have in your packet a resolution to approve a proposal for Barry Long for design of the town square. So that is the next step. The next piece of it is, you know, we have to sign the contracts, go to closing. Then we're going to work on demolition of those buildings. That's the next. And then, so these costs are covered in this grant. We had the 300,000 for, we had the $800,000 grant. 300,000 is for professional services, so that covers appraisals, the phase one studies that were done and completed, the asbestos work. Which you also have a resolution, I had to, they, we had asked them as part of the negotiating, which resulted in the results, you know, the good results that Emery was able to get on that demo. The cost of, we needed a little more information from H2M and a little more work from them. So they're asking for an additional $3,000. You have those proposals in your packet also, because we had originally agreed to X. We needed a little more work, which they did, and now we're going to cover the cost of that. Those are, all those expenses are all covered in 300,000 that we have for consulting fees in that $800,000 grant. So we'll get reimbursed for all of that at some point, but we have to spend it first, as you know. So, you know, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you. I think it's going to be an awesome project. I'm looking forward to the next step.
Us too. Thank you.
Yes, and it's a unanimous decision on, on, on the entire board. And I just want to commend you both for your teamwork. That is absolutely a perfect example of teamwork. And people should be mindful that we did this under COVID, under an executive order.
I was just thinking that.
Yeah, under lockdown. And I also want to make note that you have gotten some grants also, as a result of that during COVID, when other people weren't getting grants. So we are working together with, with the county. And we're working, the team is working together, and they, they see the unity. And people are now giving us money to, to grant, to move this forward. And again, thank you both. In a moment, I'll ask you to enter into an executive session to discuss the following. We have three legal matters today. Matters involving pending litigation, Town of Riverhead versus Suffolk County. Matters involving pending litigation, Town of Riverhead versus New York State DEC. And the third is matters involving pending litigation in a matter on Oak Hills Association versus Woodson. Can I have a first and a second to enter into executive session, please?
Can I just ask Supervisor, just sorry to interrupt you. So will, there be a resolution 36? Will that be to adopt a pattern book at the next meeting?
Yes, they're going to, it'll be up for vote.
Okay, so it'll be.
And she'll send it around. We'll have it sent around. Well, she said she wrote it. So she's just going to send it around one more time, and it'll go into, in a track. And you'll see it for voting on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I have a first and a second to enter into executive session, please?
The first?
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move, everyone be safe, and thank you.